Yes, we're back. We are. Our whole here was scheduled out for more. But we have other hearing in United States. This is a lot.
Yeah. It's a problem.
Yeah. That's it. I'm gonna go.
We were. Are you doing?
Good.
Okay.
That yard. So, yes.
Huh?
That yard and so on.
Yeah. I don't. I don't keep finding things. Okay. All right.
Well, north would just kind of ring the clock to.
Well, that's like a worry.
Yeah.
Hold on.
Maybe the.
I can't hear some.
How well.
What?
But we have. What we're doing now. For the public.
I can't hear words. I'm saying what?
Do you recall during the public hearing if we have this range over the whole budget?
Yeah.
Goes through the whole budget in the public hearing?
Yeah, well, isn't that what it's called?
I would say, I would say the same thing.
Yeah.
Whole budget like.
Because you know, not everybody is interested in one thing or the other, but then having them anyway. Mostly people don't know what they hear in that one.
That is true. Okay, Mr. Green, we'll be a little bit fire with this place.
And how many pages is that in?
Fire. Hello. Five, six, seven. Three, three, seven.
What?
Three, seven.
Yep, three, seven.
Wow, I got the word we're dead there.
My, mine was about ninety.
Mister Mayor, does this take into consideration what we did did for them? Oh, okay.
You said, I was just saying mine was about.
Yeah.
Right, the, the, what we just approved with council meeting in this, okay.
I, I would just. I didn't get your budget. Yeah, the budget's in that one, I think, right here. Yeah, it's just your budget.
He got the present presentation.
I don't have it. They bring your budget with you. Okay. No, you weren't, I weren't having anything on this.
Yeah, but I had one, one I had, one I had. Three.
You had. That's okay, go ahead and see, go print it out. Go print it out. You didn't have an actual copy, did you? No. Do you want? What's it, even my guy offering it up? It's Saturday, we're going to write it here instead of.
That's why I'm wanting to send you a couple of rough, rough.
Right. Right. That's why, that's why we're sitting here now. Once we put everything together, then you gotta print up the budget book for you, so.
That's where you have to ask some new markers. You're asking for approval of the twenty-two, twenty-three budget, right?
Not, not, not tonight.
Not tonight?
No, it won't happen to the second meeting in June, which you about to, that's what we're going through right now, line item by line item. It relates to the budget. I know Mister Green has it up on the screen. As it relates to BSNA and what's in.
Now, when we're done with everything, I'm gonna print out what we all agreed on and then that's what you'll have.
Right. We, we want you to have it in front of you. Okay. Let me do this. I can follow. Screen. Here we are right here. Right there. Okay. All right, guys, let's go ahead, Mr. Green.
Okay, so we'll just start with fire administration and with the salaries. Um, the, um, chief requested one million, two hundred and fifty-five thousand, four hundred and sixty-five dollars, and we recommended that amount.
I can't hear you.
Okay. Uh, can you hear me now?
Yes.
A little better. Uh, yeah, so the chief recommended one million, two hundred and fifty-five thousand, four hundred and sixty-five dollars for salaries, and we put that in our recommend. He requested that, and we put that in the recommended budget as well.
And this is with the contract and the different numbers as it relates to.
Yeah, I mean, because it's really is just, we're just shuffling numbers, so that total salary number is still, you know, it's, it's still in play. It's not like it's gonna increase for us.
Okay.
Still in play. Now, what we will see, um, is when we go down to the overtime, you'll see that, um, the requested was one hundred and eighty thousand, and because of our, um, negotiations, we've cut that, um, overtime down to seventy-five thousand. For the, um, longevity benefits, that's gonna remain at three thousand. And the, um, holiday pay is gonna remain at sixty-two thousand, six hundred dollars as contractual.
Question, Mister Green.
Yes.
I, I, I just wanted to ask him a question.
Mm-hmm.
Um, cause I didn't, I didn't hear you say the reason why you, you're taking a hundred and eighty thousand dollars, cutting it down to seventy-five thousand for the fire department.
Yeah, because we are, we're, they're getting more people, the, um, deal that the, um, fire department is actually negotiating is gonna allow him to hire more people. And in order to hire more people, we had to cut some of his overtime. Yeah.
All right.
Okay, and, uh, oh, I'm sorry.
Um, I'm sorry, where are you, where did you leave off there?
Um, I left off at the, um, holiday pay.
And you said that's contractual, right?
Yes.
Okay, so that's only contract workers.
No, I'm saying.
I'm a union.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, okay. Okay.
Okay, and then, uh, just the social security is gonna be the same, twenty-three thousand, nine hundred dollars. Um, the group insurance, we have at two hundred thousand dollars. Last year, there was about two hundred and sixty-three spent. We are, um, currently, we, you know, are getting a new, um, insurance company that we're working with through the HR director. And so two hundred thousand would be the budget for the fire department's group insurance for the next year.
See the same thing, I, I don't know if your mic needs to be turfed up and just sound like it's muffled.
Can you hear me now? Is that better?
A little bit better, but still maybe need to be turfed.
Pull your mouth.
If you could turn it up.
Yeah. Tell, do it.
Uh, Troy, if the volume can go up on that a little bit?
I'll try to talk.
You know, I'm trying to adjust it without calling it too bad. Okay.
Okay.
He's gonna be working on it and try to get you up a little bit.
Okay, I'll try to just talk a little louder. So, yeah, so we'll have two hundred thousand dollars for the group insurance for the fire department. Uh, employee health contributions, you know, obviously that's gonna be something that the employee is gonna be contributing, so you see a negative twenty thousand, three hundred for employee health contribution. The pension, we're gonna have to put five hundred and fifty thousand into the pension for the fire department.
So that increased based off of the actuary?
No, that's not an, that's, no, yeah, this is, this is gonna be baked. They requested six hundred and four thousand, five hundred, but after speaking with, uh, Plantman Rand, he said five hundred and fifty thousand is what's gonna be needed.
Okay.
Yeah. All right, then we've moved down to workers' compensation. They requested fifty-two thousand, five hundred. Uh, it doesn't look like we had any workers' compensation claims this year, which is good. Um, so if, but last year we had seventy, it looks like we had seventy thousand. Uh, no, we had no workers' compensation, but that clothing, clothing allowance, they have seventy thousand, five hundred and fifty-seven dollars, but none this year. Now, I'm thinking the clothing allowance is, was part of the regular salaries because we switched to DM payroll. So if that's the case, that would explain why you zero for clothing allowance, but there was clothing allowance spent, it just was rolled all the way up into the salaries.
Well, is that another instance, Mister Green, as you're saying that DM payroll, you guys just paid it through the paycheck, the regular paycheck? And it made that number may change?
Yes, well, it's paid, and the only thing it'll do, it just affects our activity in terms of the line items for this year. Because it's showing that we paid nothing for clothing this year, but we probably did, it's just under salaries, is what I'm saying. So when, so when it was paid through DM payroll, it wasn't broke out to clothing allowance, just like with the police department. When we looked at the police department budget, you saw zero for gun allowance, zero for clothing allowance, but they, they obviously paid it. It just wasn't in the line item in BSNA, so it was paid through DM payroll, but not recorded as clothing or gun, just regular salaries. So it was paid, just not showing in the right column for this year's activity. Next year's activity, we're gonna fix it and correct it and make sure that clothing allowance is coming out of clothing allowance. Gun allowance is coming out of gun allowance and not just out of salaries.
Wouldn't that make the salaries go up?
Well, it made the permanent salaries go up for this year if it's already included this year already. So it's in the salary, so if you were to take that clothing allowance and that gun allowance out of the permanent salaries, those salary activities for this year would be less, but you'll still see the money in the clothing and gun allowance, so it's still gonna be the same effect. That's all, so it's not like it's any less money being paid, it's just not in the right line item.
One other question.
Please, go ahead.
Um, the, the first, the, the company that's doing our payroll, it sounds like that they can't really get certain things that we need and put them in right, um, orders. Is something that we can maybe change and look, I mean, look at?
It was just growing pains.
Yeah.
It was just really just growing pains, they're solid now, but.
Yeah, yeah, it's a matter of like, when, when we switch over to a new payroll company, you have to give them all of the detailed information, everything. If you don't give them the detailed information, they're just gonna go with what you gave them. And if we as a department here is, don't say, hey, this has to come out of clothing allowance, this is gonna be gun allowance. If you don't get that detail and it's going to their checks, they're gonna just mark it as salaries. So we have to clean that up, it's our responsibility to give them the proper information, so, and they'll do whatever we tell them.
That's why I was explaining to our expenditures reports that I knew that wasn't correct because some of the salaries wasn't taken out of there. So our bottom line figure wasn't correct.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. All right, thank you.
Very welcome. Okay. So, uh, moving down to the next, again, you'll see advanced life, life support. Notice you'll see zero for activity, but it was paid, it was just paid in the regular salaries.
So we were losing that.
What is it?
Advanced life support, ALS.
Right, so you, you won't necessarily be losing advanced life support. We're basically saying that if we can't run the advanced life support, we're not dependent on the EMTs basically anymore. Because the basic life support now is actually from the chief explaining it to us, is just as much as the advanced life support as it relates to the reimbursement of, of the service, or the billing of the service. So we're not losing ALS per se, but we would be crippled to the manpower if we can't run it. Like we've been before. And I'll have him speak on that a little bit more when he's, he's, he was supposed to be here, I don't know who's on the chief, but I'll, anyway.
Yeah, cause this, these are all expenditures right here, so what councilwoman is saying is that if we're not doing it, we shouldn't have this expenditure for next year. Is that correct, councilwoman?
I hear what she's saying, for sure.
Yeah, pretty much, I, you know.
I mean, it makes sense if we're just gonna be doing basic versus ALS.
Yeah, but it's, but we have it in the budget now, though, it's in here. If we just, if we don't spend it, then that's just gonna help our bottom line.
At the same time, we still try to balance the budget, but we know we have between now and the second meeting in June to figure that out.
Figure that out, yep.
Exactly, make sure we make a note of that.
Okay. Um, and for office supplies, they requested two thousand, we gave them two thousand for recommended. For operating supplies, chief recommended twenty-six thousand, they spent about twelve thousand, two hundred this year. Um, so I put fifteen thousand in there for that. Cause again, keep in mind, you know, everyone's gonna request what they would like, but we are still trying to balance the budget. So there're gonna be some line items that are gonna be adjusted. And, you know, if the chief was here to kinda, you know, explain why that needs to remain, then we would, you know, consider that, but I felt like that was fifteen thousand was a good number for that line item. Um, for community emergency, they had seventy-five hundred requested, seventy-five hundred was requested last year, there was nothing spent for that last year, there was nothing spent for that this year, so I didn't put it in. Um, for small tools and equipment, there was four hundred and twenty-seven dollars spent for small tools. Last year, I don't know why, but there was like a negative two thousand, four hundred dollars, I don't know how that occurred, but, um.
I think chief said it was out of, when I asked him about it, he said it was out of the wrong line item.
Okay.
Here you had that information.
Okay, and, and so there was a thirteen thousand dollar request last year for small tools and equipment, but there was only four hundred and twenty-seven dollars spent. There was a thirty-three thousand dollar request this year, but again, there was only four hundred and twenty-seven dollars spent. So I just put a thousand in there, and until the chief explains to me, it can give me a rationale why we should have thirty-three thousand in there, which we have no history as far as I can see from this year and last year, that we even spent by three hundred dollars.
Right, he was saying that that was for future use, that he wanted to be able to buy some more stuff, but like I explained to him, we would have to get to that. And that could come with the request to council if we have the money for it, but right now we didn't, so.
Okay.
That's fine.
Okay, thank you, sir. All right, uh, for medical supplies, there was a request for thirty thousand, we gave them thirty thousand as a recommended. Fuel, there's a forty thousand dollar request, and we recommended forty thousand as well.
Right, here's my.
Yes.
Okay, hold on one second. A customer, Councilwoman Williams, you had, you, you got, you have a question, go ahead.
Um, I'm looking at this fuel cost, you, you're making a deduction, man, I mean, can you explain that to me? Because I know, I know we do a whole lot of runs in extra. Amalat and fire, but I'm just trying to figure out, and, 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 and you're cutting it down to just forty thousand.
I didn't cut it, he requested.
Well, I, I mean, I'd like that question to be answered because I don't wanna see it run no fifty, sixty thousand dollar, uh, 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 fuel bill, and then all of a sudden, you know, gonna be ran forty-six, four-eight, twenty-eight.
Well, he requested forty.
Right, but we know, we know, we know too, Mister Green, that the request is, we're, we're saying, okay, yeah, put a request, but we know the fuel costs went up tremendously.
That's right.
So we wanna make sure that we, we adjust for that, and I agree with you on the.
Yeah, I need, I need to find out what, what is his, what is his method?
But he won't even have no rationale on that, actually, it's our DPW director, he did throw his hand up right when that question. So I, I wanted to get your question out the way, and then Mayor Protim, did you have something to add to that?
Oh, I was just saying that, that the fuel prices that went up, and, and, and are they all using gas from DPS?
Go ahead.
Take them, try, okay.
And all of them use, they use the pump over there now.
Oh, well, that's.
Sound like our detective, our chief, I, I got a gas car, I think you got a gas car, that's about it, but I used, I used his spot too, so.
And they, so they could do it with their forty thousand, that what you're saying?
Well, no, we're about to increase it up to twenty, sixty thousand.
Yeah.
You, you have to, I think all the fuel costs should be increased.
Okay.
Little boy. All I'm seeing is red.
Okay, so, uh, building maintenance supplies, uh, there was a, a seven thousand dollar request, I left that at seven thousand. Spent seven thousand last year, forty-four hundred this year, left that at seven thousand. Uh, equipment maintenance supplies, there was none spent last year, there was none spent this year, there was three hundred requested last year. Uh, there was three hundred, I mean, three thousand, I'm sorry, requested this year, I left that at zero, we haven't had any activity there.
Excuse me, one, one question, I'm sorry, Mister Chief.
Please.
Did they get the bathrooms now? Cause I know we, uh, they said they was getting the bathrooms, we done, did they ever get that done?
They actually did.
They did?
They're doing, they're going through that process, we got the grant for the roof.
Okay.
And monies for the gas, I mean, uh, the bathrooms they're doing now, remember, we put it in the budget.
Right, right, okay, I just wanna make sure, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Okay, um, professional consultant? I don't know exactly what that details, but I know that there was only sixteen thousand or seventeen thousand spent last year, there was thirteen thousand or almost fourteen this year. Um, the request was for forty thou, forty-three thousand last year and for the upcoming year, and I, I, I put it at twenty.
Can you drill down on that real quick for me, just let me see what they paid, but, um.
I need to know what that is.
That's what we're looking at now.
Uh, yep.
BSNA, that's what you asked, what that twenty thousand is for the consultant.
Uh, yeah, I wanna know what, he said he didn't exactly know what it entails, remember, all the, anytime it says professional consultant, I wanna know.
Hold up, there it is right there.
I can't see that far, man, he's with my glass.
I'll go down, so, and, annual fees, there were annual fees, um, renewal application for fifteen, let me see, what was that? Two twenty-five, fifteen hundred for state of Michigan quality assurance assessment. There is another quality assurance assessment, um, service repairs for rescue stretchers, service respe, repairs for rescue stretchers, um, quality assurance assessment, things of that nature.
So I do wanna still know who they are, what they do for us, so if you could just have chief or Mary respond to us on that.
Okay.
What they are, because it sound like repairs versus consultant, is it a?
Well, quality assurance assessment, I'm sure that they come.
Yeah, that's a consultant, I can get that, but repairs or something.
Uh, the service repairs for the rescue stretchers, um, yeah, I mean, yeah, we need to figure out who that is because that could go under.
Should be under a different line item process. Okay.
So I, that's why I put that at twenty and not forty-three.
Okay. Make a note on that for me, please, though, to get Mary.
Yes. Okay, um, for telephone, there was five hundred dollars requested, they spent three hundred and eighteen dollars this year, so I left five hundred dollars in there. For building maintenance, there was, um, nothing requested. And there is nothing in there for the recommended budget as well, there was no building maintenance expense. Well, there was fifty-seven hundred last year, none in the budget, and then eight thousand, three hundred this year. So again, I'm thinking he's covering that with grant funding, and that's why he didn't request anything for building maintenance, but there's obviously some building maintenance activity.
Okay.
Okay, so. And so if I drill down on this eighty-three hundred, that says emergency repairs to generator, emergency repairs to generator, um, another, what's his building maintenance right here, what is this, this looks like, uh, clean, look like it could be, but this twenty-three hundred? Uh, what is this, Val, Valcor PPC holdings for twenty-three hundred dollars?
I think that's the, um, when they had the, they had that COVID stretch and they were spraying, they had the specialists come in and spray it down.
Oh, okay.
Uh, all the amylams and all that stuff.
Okay. So, yeah.
Find that out, but I'm pretty sure that's who that is.
Yeah, so again, I'm, you know, I'm saying small tools repairs and shelf, and shovel, small tool repairs and shovel, service for water leak, replacement parts, repairs for heating, so I'm seeing some activity here for building maintenance, but I didn't see anything requested for building maintenance.
But they shouldn't, it should come out of that hundred thousand, he's saying that central.
So it's been coming out of, it shouldn't have been coming out of this, this eighty-three hundred should be somewhere else.
Exactly.
Okay, well, we're gonna leave it at zero.
Yeah, I agree. Go ahead.
All right, equipment maintenance, there was fourteen hundred spent this year, there was three thousand requested, I left three thousand in there for the recommended. Now, the vehicle, vehicle maintenance and repair, I believe that's going down because of our new deal, I believe with Enterprise, but there was only ten thousand requested for that, and I put ten thousand in the recommended, can you confirm that, Mister Bibb? Building vehicle maintenance and repairs?
They still got they old, the old, the one that Jason. Yeah, so, no. Ten thousand dollars.
Being modest.
Yeah.
He being modest and keeping his budget down.
Vehicle maintenance and repair, he had thirty thousand before.
Uh, the previous period, he had, uh.
It recommended, but then.
Recommended forty.
Taking it up to thirty, when we talked.
Yeah.
I mean, I know.
So you wanna take, take that up to?
Oh. He just looking at what he doing. Yeah.
Yeah, I don't, I mean.
What you recommend, because you looking at strange.
Well, again, I didn't know if it has something to do with the enterprise, it feels.
It does not, he's just trying to present a balanced budget.
Okay. Well, looking at twenty-three thousand so far this year, I would safely say twenty-five? Cause he's already spent twenty.
More.
What you thinking it should be? I need you to say, that's why we get, that's why we sharpen it up.
Wow.
Jesus.
So why was there only twenty-three this year?
He did, if it be. If, if, if Allen went down and you call those. There was getting an active, but when you just go on a shock, this is. But you kind of have to do a certain special on.
Mister Bibb has handled all of that for us, so he would be the one.
And twenty-five thousand dollars. He did it here.
It looks like we got through this year with twenty-three. Last year was fifty.
And he had fifty thousand. Last year was fifty, so we put it in thirty.
Okay.
Put it at thirty, and we have to adjust, just in case, I mean, it is insurance. Yeah.
Yeah, we have to, because I have the double, you know, I don't know, you know, it's one, but I thought it was reasonable.
For subscriptions and membership, they had a thousand dollars recommended or requested, we recommend a thousand dollars for that line item. Education and training, it was fifteen thousand requested, and we're gonna recommend fifteen thousand for the education and training, especially with the new guys coming in. For capital outlay, uh, there was a request of thirty thousand dollars in here for capital outlay, um, you know, again, that's, I mean, we put the thirty thousand in there, but again, that's something that we would have to discuss and see exactly what he's planning on.
The roof to fifteen. That's all, that's in this year. Cause we, we see, he's going through it right now.
There's no description.
Yeah, he's just asking for, he's just asking for Campbell, so. That's what I'm saying, you can make that zero. I'm saying you can make it zero because we have the money for the bathrooms already.
So this year, it was, uh, he had, there was forty-seven, forty-nine thousand spent this year for, they got roof, roof replacement materials, uh, deposit on fire station bathroom, yep, so that's a, yeah, that won't happen.
That's, that's getting being spent right now, but that's what I'm saying to you guys.
Yep, so we can take that out, yeah. Okay.
You can take that out unless this councilman gives more money to the fire department for the building. Sound like with that new roof and bathrooms, unless it's something else over there, Major, you're not telling.
Sound like with that new roof and bathrooms, unless it's something else over there major, you're not telling.
There's something, Bobby, you have to just ask somebody for you.
I don't think there's nothing that he, more he needs over there.
And the roof in the bathroom will not be.
Right, okay, go ahead, Mr. Green, you take it to Campbell, I lay down the wood, zero, zero, for now, anyway.
All right, uh, lease payments, there was seventy-one thousand six seventy-nine requested, so I put that in there as the recommended.
Now, you got eighty to your before, forty-six to activity.
No, yeah, there was forty-six this year, eighty was the budget.
Yeah.
For this year, but there was only forty-six that actually happened.
It's a footnote in there.
Yes. Yeah.
Yeah, that, that's probably why he put it in there, but I could confirm that, though.
Um, it's got, it's got right here in the footnote, uh, two thousand eighteen ambulance payoff, eight thirty, twenty-three. It's up under the footnote, it's got forty-four thousand, and then it's got eighteen schoolboy equipment final payment. Maybe twenty-seven, two oh three, and then it's got, the total is seventy-one. So it's the forty-four thousand and a twenty-seven thousand, and I think it equals to seventy-one, six, six seventy-nine.
Yep, on the nose, so that's it.
Yeah, that's it, okay.
That's it, I agree with that.
All right, so that's it for fire.
All right, even more.
All right, going down to building. Building department, we have two hundred and twenty-eight thousand six hundred dollars requested for salaries. Um, and I put two sixty in there, because our activity this year already is two sixty-four.
So that means we, we give an increase in raises, or are we, uh, hiring new employees for it to go up?
No, it's, no, it's up now, like, it was, it was two hundred and twenty-eight thousand three hundred that was budgeted for this year. But we've already spent two sixty-four this year. Looking at all of the different payrolls right here, these are just showing payrolls. So we would have to, you know, um, dig deeper into it to see exactly what the increase was, why it's more than what was.
Who are, who are these, this is covered in this, do you know?
Uh, just the employees from, uh, the building department, so.
I mean, you got, you got the, the building department head, of course, eighty-six thousand. And then you got, uh, the administrator, sixty-six thousand, and then you had a two. Um, the two, what are they, texts, you know, that's their support, and like, I think each one of them are like a thirty-eight. Forty about seventeen, I know seventeen, and then twenty-one for Gina, seventeen something for Tina. And then Gina was like twenty-one something, cause she, you know, she had been here with us, whatever.
So it sounds like it went down, cause if you got activities at two sixty, what I mean, how much you got?
It's all, he, he said that this didn't went up, so could that be a payroll issue with DM payroll?
Yeah, because he only requested two, two hundred and twenty-eight thousand, so there's difference.
Right, of course, that's a big difference.
Yeah, so something, somebody either left or whatever, but he requested two twenty-eight. But it said, the activity that I had from this paper was two forty, so it said two.
It's two sixty-four now, and that's what I'm saying. Yeah, that's why I didn't just put the two twenty-eight in, even though they requested it, that's too low.
Right.
Not even asking him on that, you need to drill down on that.
Oh, yeah, I, I, I can find out exactly who's getting paid what to figure out why it's this much.
Yeah, well, we need no raises or anything, we only got those four people, unless somebody getting paid out of there, shouldn't be getting paid out of there.
So everything, when we're going through this, everything that we're questioning, I'll have time to investigate before I get you to find a budget book, but.
Now, let me say this, no, here it is, let's see here, you have. Your professional consultants, are they, you did, are those are your, your guys, your, uh, what's the name guys? Your, uh, inspectors?
Oh, yeah, oh, you want me to go down to professional?
Look at who's getting paid out of that. That's where your inspectors.
Yep.
Okay, so we need you to drill down on that number, to see what's going on, cause that number should always be pretty much set.
Yep, it's, uh, sixty-six, sixty-six, and see, that's another thing, it was last year. Well, for this year, the budget for professional consultant, amended budget was twenty-seven, two hundred, but the activity is sixty-six. So that was, that's far off. It's forty thousand dollars more than what they budgeted for.
Um, yeah, yeah, I need you to drill down on both of those, cause see who's getting paid out of what, how much they're getting paid.
Yeah, cause last year there was only thirty-nine thousand spent.
And we know because of COVID, probably, this year we did go all the way in.
In, all right, so I'll just start back up with the, um, uh, I did the salaries. So temporary salary, we have temporary salaries in here as well. There was five, five thousand five hundred and sixty-eight dollars of temporary salary. If I click on that, it's just on, uh, payroll check date. DM payroll check date right here, so I would have to go into DM payroll and see who got paid. Out of these checks to see what that money is for.
Cause it wasn't budgeted for last year for that. That should be a budget amendment on that one as well.
Okay, so the request, there was eight thousand requested in that. There was the eleven thousand activity in twenty-twenty-one. It was eleven thousand of that activity in twenty-twenty-one, fifty-five hundred this year. Nothing was requested for last year's budget, but eight thousand was requested for this year, so I put eight thousand in there. Now, we can find out what that is, yeah, and then we could possibly.
I know you got tri- triplet, what, that ain't for triplet being paid, I don't know, she was at the rep sometimes.
It could be, I can figure that out.
Here sometimes, you know what I mean?
Yeah, yeah, I can figure that out.
Let's figure that out.
Um, salaries, overtime, again. I look here, still some DM payroll stuff for overtime. And we have to figure out exactly who that overtime went to, there was four thousand of overtime last year. There was two thousand requested, so I left two thousand in there, but again, that, that's one of those line items that we wanna take a look at and see. Who's getting overtime and why?
I think that's all triplet.
Okay, um, social security is gonna stay at seventeen thousand six hundred. Group insurance, we have at twenty-five hundred. I don't know why there was thirty-seven thousand eight hundred in the budget for group insurance. And there's only two thousand and one hundred activity last year, only two thousand three hundred activity this year. So I don't know who budgeted for group insurance to be thirty-seven thousand eight hundred dollars, but. You know, I don't know. Okay, so twenty-five hundred is gonna be the number for group insurance. Employee health contribution, a negative three thousand, so we're looking at the employees contributing three thousand. Uh, employee dental contrib- contribution, that's going to be a negative two thousand as well. I don't know why he has that in there as a positive, but that should be a negative. Uh, for the pension, we've got sixty-six thousand four hundred for pension.
Can you drill down on that too for me?
Yeah, there was forty-eight thousand last year, seventy-three thousand this year.
Who's getting paid off of the pension, cause you should only have, if that's the case, you had three employees over there that warrant that. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
For you to check that into that.
Definitely.
That number makes sense.
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't look like it does, because there was only forty-eight thousand spent last year. Okay, uh, the next line item we have is office supplies, there was nine hundred and fifty dollars spent this year, five forty-three last year. There was a thousand requested, so we're gonna put a thousand in there as the recommended. We already discussed the professional consultant. And then BSNA is costing us thirty-five hundred dollars a year, so we got thirty-five hundred for the recommended.
Hold on, Mr. Green, you got profession, and maybe somebody, uh, maybe I got the wrong sheet, you got professional consultant sixty-six.
Sixty thousand, sixty thousand for.
Line item eight zero one.
Eight zero one should say.
Professional consult.
Yep, should say sixty thousand for the requested, sixty thousand for the recommended.
What eight?
It was sixty-six for the activity this year.
Okay, gotcha. Okay, can you explain that, just, just right here, that you, you, you paying out sixty thousand dollars to?
That's for inspectors.
These are the inspectors. You saying the consultant is, who, who are they, the person? You got, um, Marcus Hendricks, um, Michael Legon, um.
Morgan.
Morgan, and one other person that comes in kind of off, off of these, always like one. They do all the inspections, they go out and do all the inspections for building, commercial, um. The building departments? Yes, building department. They're ten ninety-nine, correct, Mr.?
Yes.
Those are ten ninety-nine employees, so they shouldn't get pensions, benefits, none of that.
Okay. And then our next line item that we have is printing and advertising, it was three hundred dollars requested, three hundred dollars recommended for that. All right, subscriptions and memberships, there was two hundred and fifty dollars requested, two hundred and fifty dollars recommended. Education and training, there was one thousand dollars requested and one thousand dollars recommended. Now, the refunds and rebates, there was no activity this year, no recommend, no requested, no recommended. However, there was a lot of activity in the prior year. Uh, for equipment, there's nothing in there for that. Uh, and that's it for building, any questions for building?
Just make sure we get those answers on those, um, what's the names for, we know permanent salaries and then, of course, a temporary.
All right, so now we can go down to code enforcement. And for lease payments, there's nothing, the first line item should be salaries for code enforcement.
That's what, that's what it is, that's where it went up at, the building department code enforcement. Because we brought code enforcement back over to city hall under the building department.
That's why I was gonna ask you, are all of them up on the building department now, where are they at?
No, so you have, you have two that's over at the police department because of lean. They have to have access to doing tickets and stuff like that, like, but that's not their primary. Function, primary function of ordinance offering their courses, enforcement, however. It's to be able to, you know, go out in the community and speak to the community and educate the community. And then all the enforcement goes through Officer Wall, which is our supervisor for code enforcement. She's over at, um, the police department, and then you have the animal control officer, that's the animal control and code enforcement. So then you have here, you have three code enforcement officers under building, under the building department. Which is, um, Michelle Paisley, uh, Jennifer Hill, and, um, what's? Greg what? Yes, that's that.
So, so all of it is getting paid eighty-two thousand, that's all, how many are getting?
It's not eighty-two, it's more than that, because you got the twenty-something that's in there too, from community development block grant, so it's a hundred and something.
So, uh, why, so why isn't the two code enforcement, why aren't they?
Actually, you got, you got, so they, so, so let me say this, so you had a two code enforcement officer just in police department. The salaries over, so they don't break it down, code enforcement, if they have officers. So in the past, it was the same way, never broke it down into like this officers, right? Oh, that's the budget for the police department, cause it's under police department personnel, so the chief actually use them, how he sees to use them. At the same time, working with code enforcement is what it is, because we couldn't, all the officers, if we had sent all of them back over to PD. Then, of course, all of them could have been under lean, but at the same time, the code, the police department is so spread so thin, it was really just supervision. Number one, and then making sure that they're doing what code enforcement should do. And all of you have been in this building many a times, and the code enforcement office has always been right here in the building department. So when they shifted them, they shifted them all at one time, because they wanted all of them to have lean access to be able to write tickets and. Uh, do enforcement on like cars and, you know, stuff like that, cause really, that's what you need lean for. Was I've been looking at it, it's not that they needed, uh, powers and lean to be able to write tickets to individuals, cause we can't do that, they're not sworn officers. But they're writing tickets for property damage or, uh, you know, enforcement ordinance or, you know, after citations or whatever it is, right? That they get for the court to be able to, and then towing cars, right? So we were like, okay, you know what, I remember when we used to have a, a animal control officer, that's all he did was write tickets all day with cars. So they're under, you see those two, they're under police personnel. The other three are covered, except also, I'm sorry, backup, except Officer Wall. So this Officer Wall is pretty much here, as you see her by herself, that's Officer Wall, and then, uh, half of. Half of one of the individuals because of the, uh, community development block.
So, we, we've got salary grant reimbursement, and it's got a negative twenty, so.
Right, so that twenty thousand for the company from community development block grant, which we did receive that twenty thousand this year, so I don't know why. We just received that once, so why would it be negative?
What you mean negative, that, well, the negative means that it's money that we're getting that we gonna have to pay.
Okay, well, that's what he's saying. Okay, so now we'll go towards our bottom line, I know I said a lot, but at the same time, as it relates to Officer Walls. This is the code enforcement for the most part, this Officer Wall and has half part-time FTE. That makes sense, well, not FTE, PT, part-time employee, go ahead. Uh, I, I, I had brought that concern up to the chief about that, um. And one, uh, you said you got a code officer to go about cars, okay? Right. Which that code officer cannot tow that car at that particular given point. Right. And what we discussed, but a police officer can. Correct. Okay, so that, that way, if you go out there and you tag a car, you got so many days, you gotta sit there or whatever like that. But a police officer go there and tell you, if it's improper, and tow it to our, our steward, so. They lose the money that way, and so he had indicated to me that he's, he's, he's gonna put. A real officer, other word, that's a real officer out there to do just that. Right, that's what he's done. And we lose a lot of money. Right, that's what he's done in his budget, in his budget now, that's what he's requested, so he's. He just didn't say that just a minute ago. Right. And you're talking about keeping up, keeping him over there doing the same function he's doing already at the police department. That's not a code enforcement officer, what you're talking. That's what a code officer is, at police station, one of them. Right, you were saying what the chief is creating, the new position for. And I, I, no, he's saying that. He will be a code enforcement officer. Well, he, he, he was saying he was, he said, you twisted this. Organization around where he can cover that with a police officer. So, so, so basically what's happening is you have, uh, Sergeant Haywood is, is. Retired. And he was the IT specialist type of person that was pretty much not in the streets anymore. So he's bringing in a new person, it's gonna be that community person that's gonna do some IT. But also to focus on writing tickets as well, and they'll be working in conjunction with Officer Wall and the animal. And what I'm saying is, we wouldn't have to put that, okay, look, we'll look at it, you know, you look at it, I'm actually look at it. Because some people want to put all their money that we're putting in code officers right now. Well, so, so to, so basically. Unless you're gonna, you know, put more manpower into the. There you go, so basically, so not even into the building department, that person, Officer Wall, she's the supervisor for. Code enforcement, so we want her to have that lean power, so she has that lean access, that lean power to be able to work in conjunction with. Under the code enforcement officers at any given time, say that police officer that, the, uh, chief is suggesting that we utilize. That person may be on a run, um, in the community or something, and, you know, we're talking about stopping him to, you know, tow a car. No, that wouldn't necessarily be the case, you would still have a code enforcement officer, which is Officer Wall, along with the animal control officer, able to add that authority as well. We, we'll discuss that, I don't agree with you. I, I understand, I understand.
I agree with you.
So you're just saying, you think we just need to bring them all over and win this stuff? The one?
You gotta stay that, we'll be here all night talking about it.
Okay, all right, yeah, but we will increase revenues for sure with that officer that he's talking about.
Okay, and for the salary.
Sorry about that, go ahead.
Oh, well, grant reimbursement, I know that we got twenty thousand last year for the reimbursement, I'm wondering why we didn't get it this year. Uh, Dakota.
That is, should be coming, it should be here, like, any day now.
Okay, so it that will be popping in, yeah, okay, good.
They've been on top of that, I just met with Terry, I just met with Terry Carroll, who was minister to that, about, uh, what, two weeks ago. We do have that, we not missing no money on that, you know?
So for temporary salaries here. There was twenty-nine hundred in activity this year. There was twenty-four thousand in activities last year. It was forty-five thousand three hundred requested.
I do not know what that is.
Let me drill down on it.
It will be temporary salary.
Yeah, again, this is another DM payroll, I have to go in and see who got paid that. But, I mean, there was a request for forty-three, forty-five, three. I only put thirty in there because I saw we had twenty-four thousand of activity last year.
See who that is though, like, is it an employee now or whatever it is?
Right.
To split between something?
Yeah, because if this twenty-nine hundred is legit, we can take this way down.
That could just be that, that temporary option that we've been talking about being split between PDs and here.
Yeah, so that's, that could be a potential, um, good adjustment for us, once we figure out. The legitimacy of the twenty-nine hundred for salaries temporary.
Twenty-nine hundred?
Twenty-nine forty, that's what was actually spent this year.
Okay, I got it, I see you, I see you, okay.
Way, way far below forty-five thousand.
Forty-five, right, twenty-five, got you.
Yeah, so we can take that thirty thousand down to, you know, that's gonna help us a lot. But I just don't wanna do it yet because I wanna investigate further because there was twenty-five thousand spent last year.
Agreed, go ahead.
Okay, um, for salaries for overtime, there was, I put nothing in there, there was nothing requested, but as you can, as you can see, there was twenty-eight hundred dollars in overtime. And there was. For code enforcement?
You said twenty-five, twenty, how much is it now?
There was twenty-eight hundred that was spent this year and then last year it was four thousand.
One up because my, um, sheets got twenty-five, so somebody's getting overtime over there.
Check to see who that is.
Okay, but there was nothing requested, so there was nothing recommended, so if we can fix that, then we can leave this at zeros.
All right.
Okay, um, social security, we got ninety-eight hundred dollars in there for requested and recommended. And for group insurance, we got twelve thousand six seventy, recommended and requested. Now, for group insurance, again, that's one we have to investigate because there's thirty-three thousand dollars of. Group insurance just for code enforcement this year, that can't be right.
Yeah, I would.
That can't be right, so, again.
But you only had two full-time employees in code enforcement.
Yeah.
The rest of them are part-time.
Okay, for employee health contribution, we got twenty-five hundred that the employees will contribute. And the next line item is clothing allowance. There was eight hundred dollars requested, I took it up to two thousand because there was forty-six hundred that was spent this year, twelve hundred last year. And that's because there was new officers hired, I believe, this year in code enforcement, that's why the number was a little high. Now, again, there was only eight hundred requested, I took it up to two thousand. Because there was twelve hundred last year, forty-six hundred this year, we can leave it at the two thousand, or we can bring it down to a thousand.
So there's not a contract, it's not contractual, something that, I don't know, if it's like, or guns, badges, stuff like that, maybe?
Okay. All right, now, that should do it for code enforcement, I believe. Yep, and then we get down to Department of Public Works. Now, there was for salaries, temporary salaries, or is that, yeah, temporary salaries. There was no activity this year, there was fifteen thousand in activity last year. But there was seventy-one thousand three hundred requested this year. I don't know what the rationale is for that.
There he is right there.
Okay, so.
Right, but, okay, maybe, Mr., we weren't on the same page, I thought you said this was always in the line, it always budgeted, and saying we weren't, was.
Last year, there was fifteen dollars.
Jeff, you got your janitor in there too, Mr. Business, the building maintenance person.
Yes.
Cause that's, that's where, that's where it's going up at, and that's the building maintenance person, that's what added that.
Cause you got the footnotes in this one. Yeah, um, seasonal help increase twenty thousand. Um, request building maintenance janitor, part-time, part-time, twenty-four hours a week. Yeah, and that's thirty-one, thirty-one thousand two hundred.
And I know that the building maintenance person, reason why we're requesting that person, is because we don't have anybody doing that type of work in any of our buildings, correct? When you talk about changing light bulbs or. Changing all the light fixture, whatever it may be.
So I was just looking at the, I was just looking at the history myself, because last year there was only fifteen thousand spent, it doesn't look like there was any activity this year.
Mm-hmm, so part, cause you will get to the grass cutting season.
Right, well, but, grass cutting season, but the, our fiscal year is gonna be over with in a month.
Uh, so you ain't spending no money out of there? Yeah.
Okay, so, okay, so that's, but that's going up to seventy-one thousand?
No, that was with the, an additional person that he's requesting.
No, that's, so I'm, I'm just asking, are we taking that up?
Oh, it's not like we, I mean, of course, we know what we dealing with, we can't afford that, we just gonna have to keep skipping along.
Yeah, cause I put twenty in there.
You gotta bring it back down, to what is it, twenty?
Twenty, I put twenty in there.
Yeah. Yeah.
All right.
Instead of the seventy-one request, he put it at twenty.
Yep, so that should be twenty thousand.
Okay, so what's gonna happen to the seasonal, the seasonal help increase was twenty thousand? I think if the footnote was like forty thousand for seasonal help. And that's an increase of twenty thousand. And then the request for the bank building maintenance is thirty-one, so that added up to twenty seventy-one.
Exactly, and we're not doing any of that.
Okay.
We can't afford it.
Okay.
What, what we dealing with?
You're not gonna do what?
Building, building maintenance, we were requesting that we have a building maintenance person to take care, you know. Just the nicks of the house, you know, all of it, so like, for instance, I mean, you may have a roof leak over at the. VPW.
So who's gonna do it?
Jerome is skipping and doing as much as he can, then he'll call in, uh, he'll, he'll, he'll call in, uh, he'll call in the contractor.
Do the work. So, so you, you're, you're taking that seventy-one thousand down to fifteen thousand, fifteen hundred?
Twenty.
Eight thousand. Fifteen thousand?
Twenty.
Twenty thousand?
Yes, sir. And we'll figure out how to make it through, we'll see how to get through this part.
Now, also for social security, obviously, the fifty-five hundred was in there because of taking into consideration hiring that additional person.
Correct. Right.
So I just took that down to two thousand.
Well, you took wood down, employees have?
Uh, no, that's gonna be the, um, social security, social security should be two thousand. Department of Public Works, uh, that should be, uh, four, four, one, seven, one, five. All right, and that's gonna do it for public works until we get down to tree, tree trim. Oh, no, we have professional consultant, that's the hundred thousand right there, professional consultant. Take that out, okay. Thank you, sir. That was for the parking lot?
We own three, the city owns three parking lots in the city.
Oh, okay.
You own this parking lot, of course, and of course, all of our parking lots, but, um, just painting the picture. You know, between the Dairy Queen and Gracie C's Pastoria, that's our, the city's parking lot. And then on the north side, west corner, behind the plaza, we own that entire parking lot.
Okay, okay, but we, we were gonna work on it?
We're gonna fix it, it's in, it's terrible condition, it's like, all of the sink, it's terrible.
Are we fixing it?
We can't, can't afford it, we gotta find a grant or something, we gotta figure it out.
Okay, uh, tree trim, lawn maintenance, there was two hundred and three thousand three hundred requested, there was one hundred and sixty thousand spent last year. There was only one thirty-one five eighty spent this year, I left the two oh three three hundred in there, do we, do we need two oh three three hundred, sir? Okay. Oh, okay, weed cutting. We've got sixty-eight thousand requested, sixty-eight thousand recommended. Boarders and cleanups, we had ten thousand requested, ten thousand recommended.
What was that? Yeah, but you're gonna steal. Somebody gonna have to do it. What you spent, you spent, what you spent last year?
Last year, it was forty-two hundreds last year, for boardups and cleanup, but there's two boardups though, there's boardups and cleanups and then there's boardup.
Mister, Mister Green, your activity right now is ten thousand two hundred seventy-five, something.
For this year.
Right, so that's in-house.
Right, that's in-house, so, yeah, so you keep it at ten.
Yeah, I left it at ten.
Yeah. They, they, they definitely gonna need that, because sometimes you can't get to people, you have emergencies and all that.
Yep.
Be able to do that.
Okay, um, so to clean up the boardups for forty thousand?
That's like Bell Four, some guys you see coming out, yeah, boarding up, um, you know. When the police call and maybe something that happened, they need a fire department call. Right.
Okay.
Now, this is the thing, we already know, as you can see, I've been spending the money since I've been here, it relates to boarders and cleanups.
Yeah.
But at the same time, what happens if we don't board up stuff? From a fire or police or whatever, so that's, we, that's, you have to add it.
Yeah.
And then you cleaning up certain properties. Of course. You see? Exactly. Yeah. Okay.
Okay.
So those two things I would ask, that we definitely keep closing.
Okay. Um.
About that one, uh, do we have a, what are we gonna do with that one, the burn-up house on Spring Hill?
Spring Hill or Isabel?
I mean, I'm sorry, it might be Isabel.
Isabel, yeah. Not that one.
No.
Nice one, the long one. I don't think it got tore down.
Not the one exploded, that's the one that got burned up.
Well, yeah, we are taking care of that, I thought it was already done, so we'll follow up, let's follow up with that, the one on Isabel, I thought that was the one that we took.
You got a disposition on it now?
Thought we took care of it, yeah.
Yeah, that, uh, uh, Darryl went over there and took all that debris and stuff away from around it.
Yep.
And I was talking about the house itself.
It'd be boarded up.
It's gonna get boarded up?
Demo, which one are we talking about?
It's the gray one.
Right.
Okay.
Are you asking if it's gonna be demo, because it do, it is boarded up?
Or, or, or boarded up?
It's boarded up now.
I, I remember.
Right, yeah, that's one of them, as you guys have been seeing, and I'll get you a list of those, you, you've seen a year. If you haven't been paying attention, Inks Row and Annapolis, with this one tear down that we've done, uh, coming into Inks Row. And then we got the other tear down that we did on Harrison Street, right across from Cherry Hills School, and then they're gonna be tearing down the house over on Manning Street, the burnt out one. Yep, and I believe it is Isabel, there's one more that we're doing. So if you guys see anything in your district that you, you know, of course, need to be torn down, we can give it to the county and we can propose to them.
My school.
Actually, we, we, we got a, we got a really good project that's gonna be happening with your school, we're working on that now for you, yeah. It's, uh, privately owned, and that's been the battle with any of these properties, so everybody understand. They're privately owned, we have to go through due process with them, of course, we've been ticking them, they gotta go before the judge, and then whatever the judge say it is, what it is. But if we can get the property, and then, of course, with the PD, code enforcement, they're writing tickets, they're having these. Problem, safety issues at them, and we're looking at, of course, taking the properties ourselves. With the property you're talking about in your district, man, it's a, an agency that's, uh, looking to take over that and refurbish the whole building. They've been over there a few times now, uh, with the owner, but they're trying to work out the tax details, because there was some taxes that was old, so, do you know how much those taxes work? I know it was like a tax thing that they were trying to bait off, and that was in Beachdale.
Yeah.
Thirty-two thousand in taxes are old on it right now, so they're trying to figure out who's gonna pay that before you even start the transfer.
Yeah, because we have to go over there and cut the grass, I mean, it just seems like every, 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 um. Structure that looks like that, every year, we have to go over there and cut the grass.
And that costs us.
And it costs us, I mean, you know, even though we putting it on the taxes. Yeah, and you boarding it up, yeah, we spending a lot of money.
Wait, I, I, oh, you, 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 you gonna have it boarded up?
Yeah, they, they're doing it right now.
I, I, we were talking about, we're discussing that matter, because that school is wild.
That's what we're doing, so, we, of course, you know, with the private people, we've been taking, the thing is, is that we only have so much teeth. Because they gotta go before the judge, and the judge say, uh, no, or they haven't got to the case yet, which a lot of these ones we've been pushing. Are like mid-June, July, you know, that we've had on the docket for about two, three months, there's not no order to judge. Just because of where we're living in, what we doing right.
Maybe I guess.
So we have to take it in front of the dude?
Right, yeah, of course, David's gonna, David will be, you know, once code enforcement do their thing, and they come with a judge, and David will be presenting the case.
That's something, when we sell property, then we may, you know, talk to the attorney and change our ordinance. I mean, you know, we have to do all of this, then it automatically reveres back to us.
Yeah, for sure.
You know, because even a property next door, you know, they ain't even taking care of the grass and nothing, you know what I'm saying, it looks a mess, I mean, so we need to.
Oh, they've been taking care of it.
Or haven't?
Oh, yeah. No, no, they've been out there every day, they, matter of fact, they was here in City Hall today, they've been taking care of that property.
Since when, this year?
Last year they weren't.
No.
And then the house has been tore down too.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, it's just, you know, but it's, but it shouldn't take that long, when you buy property, you know. That house is open, anything can happen in that house, and it's been sitting there since they bought.
I agree, no, this is the third person that owns it now.
Well, what I'm saying is, maybe we have to take, strengthen our, our code, our, our ordinance. That if you, I mean, the first go-around, we shouldn't have to pay our people to cut their stuff, if that's the case, then it comes back to.
Yes, ma'am.
Automatic.
Mm-hmm, I understand, I'm with you with that. I understand, I'm with you with that. This refers and causes to be in all that stuff.
Yeah, that's what we're gonna have to put in there, yeah. You can't go open county and do no mess like that, you know what I'm saying?
Okay, sorry about that, Mister Green.
No problem.
Go ahead.
Okay, so now we're on street lighting, with Department of Public Works. And there was five hundred and thirteen thousand, seven, thir- seven hundred and thirteen dollars requested, and that's what's recommended as well.
And when you say street lighting, is this just the bill, or what is this? Is the whole city for the bill for the whole city?
We're talking street lighting, right? Forty thousand?
Yeah, there's a lineup, it's a hundred and thirteen thousand, seven hundred and thirteen. Here's the problem that I have on the goal record. Is that our city is dark. Inks Row, Middle Belt, Michigan Avenue, for whatever reason, half of the street lights are off.
Those new lights?
New lights that were supposed to be updated, what was it? Rebate, refund, what? Almost, for sure, I know two years.
When they was out working, when they was working, it was lit up.
Yeah. It's just ridiculous, I don't understand it. I mean, they, you know, we don't pay the building, it cut us off. But the good thing is that you had documentation that, over the last past year, you've been asking them, corresponding with them, asking, telling them about street lights and what's going on. So we can kinda get a cage on what's gonna be owed to us.
Need to meet with the big one. That's, yeah, documentation, bring that documentation, show them. We pay our bill, our light bills, and then the stuff of all them lights is out in there, you know, that's made this thing going on for quite a while.
That's right, and it makes a big difference. Okay.
Okay, um, for the next line item, we have building maintenance, there was nothing requested in there, there was a thousand ninety-eight. Spent this year, eight ninety-nine last year, I put a thousand in there. That sound about right, sir?
Right, there we go.
Alright. Um, for, same thing for vehicle maintenance and repair, I noticed that there was nothing in there, there was thirteen hundred of expenditures this year. I put fifteen hundred in there.
With how much?
Okay, so fifteen hundred is the?
No, that's my vehicle, you saying, so no monies. Yep.
Okay, so take it out?
Yep, I'll take it out.
What if we take it out? The vehicle maintenance?
Well, because we got the enterprise deal now, so.
Oh, okay.
Alright.
The other word, we're not putting any money in there because of the enterprise agreement.
Correct.
Is that covering everything, though?
Okay, so the capital outlay, we had a hundred and thirty-two thousand requested, I didn't put anything in there.
What was that, Mister Bill? You know, a hundred and thirty-three?
Thirty-two thousand.
You don't gotta rack your brain on it, it ain't in there no more anyway, so don't make a difference.
There's a little footnote, City Hall Parking Lot.
Oh, City Hall Parking.
But it's two places.
You just hear that?
No.
He put it two classes. City Hall Parking Lot.
I didn't put it in.
Well, good the job, Daryl.
Alright, so, but the next one, though, capital improvements for one thirteen.
Yeah.
Capital improvement for one thirteen, that is speed bump projected grant reimbursement.
So, let's make sure we're clear on that. For the grant, you only received how much? So how can you say that that'll be a hundred and thirteen? Right. Oh, no, it's eighty thousand, whatever you can give eighty thousand is what it's gonna be at this point, that's why we, that's why we paused. On spending the money.
You're gonna include the labor?
That's what it is, whatever eighty, a thousand is, we want to put it in so to decrease the speed, how many speed bumps you can get. That's just what it is, until we find some more money. That's what it is. Now, we can't start to even work on that in October. And a person can't, and, and, and I'm sorry, I don't wanna jump off too far, but I've had this question all week long. The city can't accept monies from its citizens to. Make, take care of the speed bumps and put them in their, in their neighborhoods. It's all about how you recognize. The city is, it's not a. Your IRS regulation. Yeah, we saw it up. So we can't, the short answer is, no. That's what people are saying to me now, well, Mayor, we just gonna buy the speed bumps ourselves and do, y'all can install them.
See, what if they buy them and get installed, and something's defective on it, and somebody hurt themselves?
They were saying, they were just gonna give us the money, so if it costs two thousand, they'll give us two thousand, can we do it? That's what people are saying, I mean, can we do something, can we do something separate, can, David? Could be something separate from, from the city? Some type of special assessment or something like that, just for? Right, that's, not necessarily taxes, but we can say to them, make it, pay into this like a GoFund.
Well, there's a total project that we were talking about, speed bump.
That was just a portion.
I know, but what, what's the total? Did we ever do a total amount?
All the streets that's been requested?
No, no, I, it was, it was two sets, that they were out investigating, uh, what speed, speed bump need to go. What is that total?
Right.
Well, the total amounts of speed bump that they recommend is only eighty thousand dollars?
No, 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 no. It was like, more like four hundred and some odd thousand dollars, dude, with everything complete. He talking about, yeah, like, everything complete, that's what he's saying.
The total amount, for the totals?
Be like four hundred dollars.
That's what. We need to look at it, cause the, the, the people had a good about getting it, then we just take it to them and see what they like. Don't leave them out, that's what I'm just saying, cause they, a lot of people talk about, well, they, they prefer to pay for the speed bump.
Right.
Cause I wanna wash it.
I guess the question is kinda what Mayor Thompson stated is, uh, I think my concern was. What if somebody is riding really fast, someone's speed bump and killed them, I mean, and. Killed themselves from the speed bump, or anything could happen, and they injured themselves, did that, would that put us in a liability, or like a?
What's the city's responsibility? We, we maintain our life, we road to our alarm.
So that's why we couldn't have.
Sure liability, regardless, you're right. I mean, could be.
Yeah, let's just say, say that the speed bump caused that.
Right, they got signs, everything. They got them all labeled, I mean, all the ones I've seen, I rode down Detroit, seen most of all of them, they got them labeled cross, street fraud, everything.
Alright, okay, Mister Green, you have, uh, two minutes to get through, one, two.
Two minutes, we ain't got.
Four, five, six, department.
Okay, alright, so, um.
Yeah, let's do, let's do, let's do that, Mister Green. Let's go through that, each, each department, any questions?
Okay, so planning.
Finishing up.
So planning, we have nothing in here, the only thing we have in planning is group insurance. And there was nothing requested, I put thirty thousand in there, just because we do have to have insurance.
We did take, now, just note what we did, though, Mister Green.
And, and what are you jumping to now?
Yep, yeah, planning, note what you did do, Mister Green, though, and, uh, professional consultant with, uh, McKenna.
Okay, uh, for McKenna, for professional consultant down here, we took, um. Uh, it was a hundred and eighty-two thousand that was requested, we took that down to one hundred and twenty thousand, that just includes two salaries, is that correct, sir?
That's right. So basically, so what we agreed to with McKenna is that we would take the salaries from Adriana, well, I'm not. The planner, and the, uh, tech, and put them into one, and then McKenna would operate that way. Um, they're up to, what is it, now, with the activities?
Activities at this point is one fifty-seven, seven twenty-eight.
Come out for McKenna.
Oh, just for McKenna, well, again, it's broke, everything is under this one line item, so there's some ZBA meetings.
Yeah, but I know you said it was like ninety-something.
Yeah, so far, yeah. This, this year, well, the last we spoke, it was ninety-six thousand.
So they would land probably around like a hundred and ten?
Yep.
And what, and what, is this seven, two, one, eight, oh, one?
That's the professional consultant.
Okay.
Has an activity that we spent this year because of, um, the CIB. Remember, you guys kept asking me that question, who's CIB, who's CIB planning? That was that monies that the, uh, state gave us for the. Development, uh, thing, the marketing analysis thing, that we agreed to taking that forty-five thousand, so we had to spend it, of course, and then we had to reimburse them. So now we got the, we spent it, and we got the reimbursement back. So we won't be spending that next year, you'll just be spending the money for planning. For the two people, so we can go back to either having two people, or we can go, we can keep going with McKenna. And McKenna seem to be working, eh, just like anything else, for the most part, but. They do have a professional people there, and they have helped us get pretty much all the, the planning department in order for the most part.
Okay, so they request in one eighty-two, and you, you took.
Well, they, well, they wouldn't, that ain't they, it's us.
Okay, so.
It was, it was us, so when they talked to the planners, talked to Mister Green, they said one eighty-two, and he looked at the activities in that, and was like. One eighty-two, and I was like, okay, no, what's the activities in there? We looked at the CIB planning. From the marketing study, that's played, paid out of there, and also McKenna was paid out of there, but the McKenna. Um, contract is only gonna be like a hundred and ten, something like that, you know what I mean?
Okay, so on, on his footnote, it's got estimate, um, nine months, year-to-date annualized, plus two percent, so. That's like one fifty-nine, two fifty?
Right, but he was totaling the whole cost with the CIB in there as well.
Right, and it's got, uh, the community image building, nine months, plus two percent, that's like another twenty-two, five.
Yeah, so they wouldn't be in there, they wouldn't consider them anymore, going, for, going forward. Community image builder's not in there anymore, and that money is gonna be reimbursed to us if it hasn't been already.
Okay.
Okay, Mister Green, any questions on planning? Right here, none, economic development? Looking at, uh, the line items on economic development.
Okay.
You see, we don't have anything in there, but the property sales, go ahead.
Professional and consultant, okay, they recommended ten thousand, but then we recommend nothing.
Yeah, economic development is, i- i- to be hon- to be honest, economic development is planning department.
Yeah.
And the special projects, which you actually see over here is community, uh, community development, so.
Could do it under that?
Yes. Oh, you don't need any monies in there.
Alright.
Will we need, um, will we still need conferences and workshops if we have a professional consulting group? I mean, you know, McKenna.
Under economic development?
Will we still need to pay and subscription memberships and, uh, workshops?
No.
Okay, but it's fifteen hundred, isn't it?
Conferences and workshops for economic development? Offices and workshop, there's, there's. Yeah.
Five hundred, well, they, well, he.
We're, we're not recommending anything in this budget at all for economic development outside of the possible land, the first right of refusal.
So you got that as four hundred and forty thousand?
And four forty.
Okay, so what about the subscriptions and membership, cause there was like five hundred dollars in activity this year?
No, you'll shift that into community development under, uh.
Okay, so you want me to take both of those out?
You'll handle that, right.
Okay.
Now, this is a wash, that four forty's a wash, because if you look at appropriations, you know, we get that money in from the investors. We actually make money on it, versus last year, we didn't even account for, and we got four forty in.
One of we do, one, 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 one of we budgeted for expenditure for one and forty thousand.
Because you got it in appropriation.
We gotta pay that money.
No, the city's not paying that at all. So, you could, you could, in actuality, you could do an amendment, Mister Green. We could, actuality, just take that four forty out, right? And just do an amendment when we got to it, when we got the money from whoever we got it from, we can say, okay, we have. Five hundred or six hundred thousand, and then we put it into the line item, right?
Yeah, but at the same time, we got the revenues and the revenue, so, you know, to have the revenues in there, knowing that we're gonna end up getting the money back.
What if it come in lower, cause it's not a set number, this number based off of properties?
I know, but, a- again, we had, if we're gonna take the money out of expenditures, we should take it out of revenues as well.
That's what I'm saying.
So just don't have it in at all.
Exactly.
Yeah, if we just leave it in, it's the same thing, cause it's a wash, like you said.
Move around through, let's go ahead, community development.
Development, anything, any questions on that?
Okay, so now, the, uh, salaries, well, that's, is that salary gonna be the same?
It's fifty-one.
Okay, fifty-one.
Fifty-one for salaries for community development, okay, I'll take that down. It's, cause it was, it was fifty-one, six ninety-two already this year.
That's, that's with, with Tracy.
And she's gone, right?
Yeah.
Alright.
She's completely gone.
Okay, alright. Any, any other questions on community development?
Debt service, just speak on that real quick, that's the three million.
I took the thousand dollars out of conferences and workshops for a community development, so there's no thousand dollars in there for that.
She gonna probably need that, just for conference, you know what, though, she can share with me. I think you got some money in there for conference and workshop for me, and I typically pay for myself, so I trip on you.
Okay.
So I can, I can, we can adjust, and she can share with me.
Debt service, we got that three hundred thousand, that's our fir-, this is gonna be first year paying that three hundred thousand, right, that's on the.
The three hundred plus the interest, right?
Well, we just, we had, just have to pay the principal, the interest is down here, up under it. Seventeen, one ninety-four.
No, I, I thought it was more than that, I'm not sure.
It's, no, that's the right payment, so it'll be three hundred and seventeen thousand, one hundred and ninety-four a year. Hopefully, we can get, the good news is that, uh, we did meet with the speaker last week. Uh, Rep Jones brought him out, and we had a really productive meeting, and one of the biggest things that we talked about. Was, of course, uh, infrastructure monies, which he's pretty confident on that, that, uh, we definitely will be getting some money on that. And then our Main Street project, of course, with the downtown development in that area, looking at possibly, uh, getting us some money for that. But the debt service, which was a three million dollars, the state has like twenty million dollars in the bucket. That they're looking for debt service to help with debt relief to communities like ours. So, that's, if we can get that out, then that's three hundred thousand, but we won't know that until they, uh, do the budget, do we have any updates, any, y'all know?
Until October, they ain't even paid that twenty, they just paid that twenty-five billion.
It's three million for the next.
I thought it was, I thought it was like three eighty-something first, so I don't know where, we down to seventeen thousand.
No, it's three million.
Three million, we both pay it all this year?
No, over ten years.
Twenty-three. Which year we both pay?
Years. Over ten years, so twenty-twenty-two, what is it, twenty-thirty-two?
Over ten years?
Yeah.
Three hundred thousand a year. Three hundred thousand a year.
That's including the interest off of it.
The interest is, what is this here, seventeen, whatever it is.
Have we found, I thought, we got that money back in what year, we didn't pay anything now?
Yep, you got the money in two thousand twelve, didn't have to start paying it back until twenty-two, so you pay from twenty-two to thirty-two.
To you, guy, or if you guys don't have it. Just pick it back. We're trying to get them to relieve it. So they'll pay it, and then we can get that money.
Like Mayor Proton said, I thought it was more, because looking at where it says amended, the interest was like sixty grand, but then. It, I remember that, it went down.
Yeah, so.
Was that off or something, or was it a different rate?
That's what they initially said.
I don't know, but Brian, Brian did that, but we can actually.
Cause I thought it was like three hundred and sixty thousand a year.
Yeah, I was only hit about that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, we had to ask him on it, because I thought that's what they said our payments were gonna be.
Three eighty.
I remember we was talking about that, I remember, right, it was like three eighty, because we were talking like, what?
We didn't realize it was that much.
We are, we were having that conversation.
Well, Mayor, um, just to answer your question, they haven't, you know, they were just paying that twenty-five point five million this May, I think. So the budget talks probably would start when they come back off the summer legislative break. And they put them all-nighters in October, November.
Now, the speaker was talking about something about happening like at the end of June.
Oh, you know what, they, I forget which one that is, I, I know what you're talking about, yeah, because they did, they, yeah.
That's what he was saying to us at the end of June, am I right, say? Yeah.
I forgot about this. Yeah, it's two different ones, I'm thinking about the s- state budget, but then there's a other budget.
Some, yeah, where you say you control so much money.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's what we're trying to get done now, we're trying to get this stuff done through appropriations, if that makes sense.
Cause yeah, cause that's, you're right, because we did get some monies one time out of appropriations, and this last time, it was out of the actual state budget surplus.
That, yeah, so this is appropriations. Alright, that'll be good news, we can get that done, go ahead, Mr. Mr. Green, insurance.
Alright, if we're in, for um insurance, we've got one hundred and thirty thousand in there for our insurance. That's for retirees' diapers, so if I drill down on that, you'll see that's a lot of the retiree insurance. Okay.
Yeah, reason why it went down, but I'd say.
Why it went down from where? Seventy-nine.
Right on that group insurance.
Group insurance, I have, uh, it says one hundred and twenty-five thousand, six fifty-six in activity so far. And for recommended, I put one hundred and thirty thousand in there. What did you have on the sheet?
One thirty, because it was like forty-two, eight, forty-six, right?
Yeah, 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 no, no.
Okay, alright.
Yeah, one hundred and thirty thousand. That's nine, four, one, seven, one, six.
What is this, uh pension prudential pre-funding, what is that?
That was when we were gonna refund our um bond, we pretended, but we didn't do it. It didn't cost us, because we didn't do the refund. Um and then the retiree health and life insurance, five hundred and ninety thousand.
Alright, any questions on that? Alright, moving into the next one, please.
Uh transfers out to Parks and Rec, sixty-five thousand, one ninety.
That's the, for retirees?
No, 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 we, we're not, we're not talking about retirees, we're talking, we're back, we're all the way down into uh.
Yeah, but I'm saying the transfer out from Parks and Rec is for retirees?
That's, no, that's just transfers to the park.
Are you trans, where are we?
Transferred monies to Parks, to Parks and Rec, you have to, you have interfund transfers, that you have to. Transfer money from the fund to Parks and Rec, so that's obviously, this is.
General fund is giving those sixty-five thousand to Parks and Rec?
Yeah.
Oh. Well, that's that one, oh, then, but there is another sixty-five thousand, though, for retirees coming out of Parks.
No, it's not coming out of Parks and Rec, no, this is coming, going into Parks.
Going into Park, right, okay, for utilities.
Yes.
Drill down on that for me, let me know what that is.
Oh, it just says general fund transferred to Parks and Rec, fiscal year twenty-two.
I wanna just know what it's for.
Yeah, last year, yeah, last year, you didn't have any money transferred to Parks and Rec.
So if you hadn't transferred last year, why are we transferring it this year?
That don't make sense.
I mean, I'm just going off of what's in the system.
He transferred out of, out of Rick's parking recreation somewhere.
And we're transferring from the general fund to Parks and Rec.
Yeah.
That's sixty-five grand.
Yep.
So you need to find out what that is. And, and the system is.
There's no footnote for that.
Wrong, that's a good thing, because you're talking about sixty-five grand. See what that is. So why would we even transfer, well, oh, just to account for it, and say that we spent that money on utilities?
Cause, yeah, this, this transfer goes into the line item for Parks and Rec, I believe, for utilities, but I was just saying, you didn't do it last year.
Just check down on it for me, we didn't do it last year. Okay, go ahead.
Okay. Um, transfer out to Brownfield, that's another transfer, it's four hundred and sixty-three thousand, seven hundred and thirty dollars.
Well, yeah, when are we done paying that Brownfield, you know, or can you, can you drill down on that course too?
I'd find out, because there was no activity this year. At all.
We need to find out for some next.
Yeah, we definitely have to find that out, because if there's no activity this year, I mean, do they? Have to look at the timing, is this something where they send this, transfer this money out in the July, or, I mean, June? Because it hasn't happened this year so far, so if, if, if we're done with it.
Back on the history, I'm gonna find out, and if we're done with it, then that'll be good.
Yeah, that's four hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars.
Come on now, Mr. Green, go ahead, what's up with?
Okay, alright, the TIF, the same thing, there's no activity for this year at all.
But you need to find out exactly.
Find that out, because that's three twenty-nine as well.
That we still making payments on?
But remember, we talked about it, guys, we had a conversation about the Justice Center. And that we weren't catching enough money in the TIF. And then the city was responsible for the balance, I think, Steve, remember we were talking about that? So that may be that, but I need for you to drill down on that, go ahead.
Yeah, we weren't gonna have enough, but we might end up putting money in there. They used it the wrong way. I'll just say it out publicly, because first of all, the tip of money shouldn't have went for no, Mr. Paul, they're building no courthouse or nothing. The tip of money has been reinvested back into that community. And through the tax section.
Didn't do that, for sure, I remember. I remember.
I wanted to go back. I don't agree with one thing. And it says here that we're gonna take. Sixty-five thousand from the Recreation Department, okay?
No, no, this is money going into the Recreation Department.
Okay, so the sixty-five thousand going into the Recreation Department.
Coming from out of our general fund, or to the rec.
Excuse me?
Okay, because I, I, I looked at it the wrong way, do like it was going into the general fund.
No, that was expensive.
So.
Add that on to the rec, money, money going in there.
So when we find out about the, the, the Brownfield and the TIF. Find out if we're done paying that or not, right?
Right.
So if that's, if that's true, then both of those will come out, if that's true.
Uh, that'll be good, because I know the true and the red right now.
No, we ain't, we still in, we still in black right now. It ain't that black, but it's black, it blew fourteen thousand, eight twenty-one.
Okay, alright. Talking about our bottom line. Our bottom line. You, you got fourteen thousand in, in bottom line, if we stick to this, ain't no way. Well, we already know, you guys have the chart before you, um, you had the budget chart before you, everybody should have a copy of this. Go through it, of course, I mean, it, it's saying exactly what we know, we should. Try to do at the same time, we know that we're bare bones, but I need for you guys to continue to look through this, we're through the general fund. At least on uh revenues and appropriations, but I still need you guys to look through, continue to look through, call through. You may see some savings somewhere, or see some things that we can do differently, we know that we have, did you take out the? Is that the eighty thousand that we agreed on, is out the budget still? For the parking lot? We know that we, based off of what we heard tonight, we know we can't afford that.
Did, did we ever incorporate any of those cuts that we emailed to you, I did not see?
You did.
Cause I, I think.
It went back in the day, back last year?
Whenever you asked us to do it, we did it twice.
That was true, we did a lot of that, yeah, it was just like stuff, I know that, I'll go back and look and see, please, but that way I can answer it.
Cause I mean. Just saying, cuts, according to this thing you just showed us, the uh.
They're talking about lease and fire.
But, still, there has to be, there has to be some way to save it, because if we don't, the state, we.
No doubt about that.
Go ahead. On this brown, on this brown town.
Brownfield?
Brownfield. We spending this four hundred and fifty-three, can you explain that?
That's what we gonna figure out, we don't know yet. We'll, we'll, we'll add that information to you, Mr. Green's gonna be drilling down on that.
No, no, I look at the Brownfield, it, it's gonna look like we ever paying anything into that.
It, it, it could, it could be um the Annapolis Point Project. Put all the infrastructure in the ground, it could be Stratford Place. You know, it's a number of things that we did as a community, trying to incentivize developments, never happened.
But what is shown here, it's showing here that, it showed that it was paid out over here. Then it said, in, in this year's budget, we, we think about paying it out again, three hundred and twenty-nine.
Well, it's because it's, it's not, it's not that we're thinking about paying it out, that's the agreement that we made with the bonds, and the issuance of.
You gotta pay it regardless?
Yes, by law, you don't have a choice, okay?
Things I wanted to ask.
Please.
I know last year, we had a similar form like this. Did we collect all of our grants that we were supposed to collect in two thousand eighteen and nineteen?
That's a really good question, that question is for Palmer, I think the only one that we didn't collect was the um. Was the fire, was the, no, it was two, the fire truck, for seven hundred thousand, two thousand eighteen. And then the building being tore down on uh, on uh, what is that street over there, Pine Street? In two thousand and eighteen.
I know it's a lot of grants that we didn't.
You're talking about Woodson School?
Woodson School was tore down, we used general fund money, we were supposed.
They collected the money for that.
You know, no, no, I'm not for sure we have it on the county side, sure, he was trying.
What, what did the county say?
Well, you didn't have it, they didn't have any documentation, the city didn't give them that.
Now, we, we just need to be cut, everything.
Did it, and the city didn't, what's the name, the city didn't do paperwork. You see the money back, that's what happened, and they, they wanted to come to stand before, so it's all that, but. Why beat a dead horse, we just need to figure out how to move forward. Money was spent, and then we didn't get the reimbursement.
And when they indicated, they give us the money to tear the school down.
They didn't give us the money, it's all based off of reimbursement, that's why, like with the complex now, as I'm doing the renovations, that eight hundred thousand, they're doing it. We're not doing it, so the money's not coming out of our bank, it's coming out of their bank. They don't give you the money, typically with grants, they don't give you the money upfront, and then you spend it. What they did, but if what, you gotta still do your paperwork, your side. You still got your work, you didn't, we didn't do our work, we didn't do, we didn't do the paperwork. Show the receipts, to show how it was done, to show we did the environmental, all that stuff, we just did it as a city, we tore it down, it looked good. But we didn't go back and do the paperwork.
Something that we did, wouldn't give us any receipts, anything for it?
I do not know, sir, I was not the mayor.
Talk to me, Steve, I know you was here, wasn't you? No, no, I'm, I'm just trying to figure out, man, because somebody didn't know something, when they were there, show that, you know, you, you was playing, but you was here.
Two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen. Yeah, we were resolving that, we were resolving it, but then we were looking for the documentation, and nothing was in.
When they tore it down, and, when they tore it down, in what, two eighteen?
Leave so.
Right, and then didn't get paid?
Contractor got paid, the city just didn't. It wasn't right, believe me, it's an investigation into all that stuff. Yes, we're still in session, we haven't called for a jury. It's not, it's all on the investigation, it is what it is, you know, the county's involved, because, you know, we signed the contract as a city. Then we're gonna do it, and we didn't, we did it, but we didn't do it.
The county is not really saying anything about it.
They are saying it, they say that they ain't giving us the money, because we can't produce any documentation that it was done. It's stuff that they asked for, like environmental studies on the interior in the building, uh, where's that, where's the receipt of? Who actually did the work, so we were able to pull that up in B S and A, and show who we paid for. At the same time, the county was like, okay, well, what about all these other documents, if you ever dealt with the county? And I'm pretty sure all you can attest to this, when you sign those documents, it's like documents this thick. With all of this different stuff on it, that they tell you, you gotta do a receipt for it, you gotta do, you gotta talk to this person, this person, it's a whole bunch of stuff. It just wasn't done. Really to pass, you gotta move forward. That would just add it more to our bottom line.
I don't think we get the pass on that, man, that's a lot of money.
You can't, they, they already took it, it's gone, it was from the feds, it's a, you're spending, you're losing. Because we didn't do our paperwork, we didn't cross our Ts, dot our Is, check our boxes, the money's gone. Yes. Exactly, that's what it was, unless you on top of a max, and max, and maximum, like I did with the amphitheater, I got that steal, you know what I mean? And then the D and R thing, I got that steal, because we were just extending it, hey, if we still wanna do it, we extend it, you know what I mean?
Wouldn't they ever say the money came from, then to pay it?
It came from the general fund.
Hey, my, that's what I'm saying, it came from the general fund, where about, the general fund?
Uh, true, we can find that out, we can drill down.
Did you get eight hundred thousand?
I don't know, we had to add Brian, and I believe so, I think it was like a million or something, it was outstanding with the, with the state and the feds. And I think we got like a million, something like that, for the truck, it's like seven hundred or something, I believe, so, pretty sure about that one. I'm talking directly to the county myself, that's, I may about to tell them stuff, alright, most poor German. Oh, favor say aye, today's interesting day.